Welcome to the Municipal Council Meeting for September 22nd.
22nd, 2021, by electronic participation. This meeting is held through the electronic participation according to Section 238 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended by the COVID-19 Economic Recovery Act 2020. For those who are able to, please rise for a moment of personal reflection. Today, I'm pleased to launch the City of Ottawa's 2021 United Way East Ontario Employee Campaign. I want to thank councillor Dudas for being our honorary campaign chair again. The work accomplished every day by city employees and the achievements of the United Way East Ontario go hand in hand to improve the lives of thousands of Ottawa residents.
The work accomplished every day by city employees and the achievement of United Way Eastern Ontario go hand in hand to improve the lives of thousands of Ottawa residents. Every single day, employees are trying to make of Ottawa a better place to live.
...community, and the need has never been greater as so many people continue to struggle with the impact of COVID-19. Last year, city employees did a wonderful job raising more than $230,000 for the United Way, and I want to thank our United Way team and those who contribute it. It was a difficult year to raise money because, of course, a lot of the events that we used to have, the chili cook-off and bake sales and so on, could not take place because of COVID-19. Over the past six years, city employees have raised more than $2.6 million for local people in need and more than $6 million for United Way since 2001, when it was designated as the city's corporate charity of choice. The United Way campaign will be different again this year due to the pandemic, but our goal is the same: to raise $300,000 and help over 1,000 local people. COVID-19 has had an unprecedented impact on all of us, but the pandemic has hit vulnerable people the hardest. I want to thank the United Way for all you're doing in our community and for partnering with the City of Ottawa on important initiatives. I know the United Way will continue to provide support to those who need it most, and I know city employees are ready and willing to help others in these difficult times. I encourage city employees to help United Way East Ontario continue its great work in our community, knowing that every little bit helps. By personally contributing to United Way, we are helping to build healthy, strong, and caring communities as we continue to rebound from the pandemic. Now ask councillor Dudas to say a few words as the honorary chair.
Thank you, Mayor Watson, and bonjour tout le monde. I am very pleased to be the honorary chair of the City of Ottawa's 2021 United Way Employee Campaign, and this is the third year that I've taken on this role, and I appreciate the opportunity to work with the city staff to make this a successful campaign in order to help those in need in our community. Mayor Watson highlighted the contributions of city staff over the past years and the importance of this year's campaign as we continue to face the devastating impacts of the pandemic. We know that COVID-19 disproportionately affects Indigenous peoples, youth, newcomers, Black and racialized communities, vulnerable women, and people with disabilities. We've also seen that more children and youth are reporting mental health issues as a result of the pandemic. And we know that issues that typically affect seniors like food insecurity, social isolation, and lack of transportation have been amplified and worsened by COVID-19. The connection between the City of Ottawa and the community it serves is strong. We're a caring community, and we continue to rise to the challenges and reach out to people who need our assistance. By donating to the United Way, our employees are supporting some of our city's most vulnerable, including people with disabilities, at-risk children and youth, and homeless youth, people facing mental health and addiction issues, and so many others. To find out more about how your generosity helps vulnerable people in Ottawa, I'd really encourage employees, but also residents, to visit unitedwayeo.ca. This year's fundraising initiatives will run throughout all city departments until February, or sorry, until Friday, December 3rd. And I've been pleased to work with my council colleagues and city staff to support the United Way efforts in this unprecedented time, and certainly a time that's been difficult for so many of our residents.
Your support is key to continuing our important work. We have to keep on going that way.
And you can do this by signing up for a payroll donation, and for $10 per pay, just $10, your donation can help change your life. The City of Ottawa uses the United Way's e-Pledge donation program, and staff will receive more information on how to donate in the coming weeks. I also want to just mention that for those of you who already give, please consider increasing your pledges this year to keep important community programs running. I know that many employees look forward to the various initiatives that departments organize and support the United Way, and as the mayor had said, in past years, we've had chili cook-offs and bake sales and raffles and clothing auctions. I mean, this year's going to be a bit different because of the pandemic, but I'm confident that staff are going to come up with some creative and fun ways to engage each other and to raise those money. I look forward to seeing them participating in some of these wonderful fundraisers. And again, thank you for your continued support of the United Way East Ontario and the critical work they do in our community.
Thank you very much, councillor, and to all of the volunteers who will be working on the United Way campaign, we wish you the very best, and we thank you for your commitment to our community. Councillor De Ruz has a very special announcement to make in his capacity as a board member of the Shaw Centre. Councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and your worship and my councillor colleague. I am just very, take a few moments to congratulate the Shaw Centre on their named world-best convention centre in the world. This is, Shaw Centre is really honoured to announce that, one internationally, Mr. Mayor and my colleague. APAX is award worldwide recognized and prestigious. The award is a testament to our exceptional team and the commitment of providing superior experiences to our clients and their delegates. And this quote is from Nina Kessler, our president and CEO. "The award is granted every two years in the recognition of the highest rating on client surveys received by a convention centre. It is based on a comprehensive analysis of the centre's performance based on customer satisfaction surveys and independent blind evaluation process carried out by LPSOS as Recognition International Market Research Company." Ensures an objective analysis to the data and address the factor, and that's how this prestigious reward is awarded. This is a historic moment for the Shaw Centre and the City of Ottawa. Winning this award will evaluate our world-class facility, draw international attention right here in the City of Ottawa, and those comments is from our chair, Joanne Poirier. Mr. Mayor, please, I ask my colleague, I'll be circulating this press release that was released on September 7th. Join me to congratulate the Shaw Centre staff and their member and the board member, the CEO, the president, and the chair on a great job, an amazing prestigious award in our city, right in the heart of the downtown City of Ottawa. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did I mute the mayor?
Sorry, yep. Is it working?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'm pleased to welcome Transit Chair Alan Hubley, City Manager Steve Katalakis, and John Mancone for this special presentation, if they'd come forward at this stage. Seems very odd that we're actually back at this podium, but it's just for this special occasion, and then councillor Hubley will be going back to his office after this. Welcome. Well, after a 32-year career with the municipality, John Mancone is retiring at the end of the month. I appreciate this opportunity to recognize John's public service since he started at the City of Napan back in 1989 and his many leadership roles with the City of Ottawa since amalgamation in 2001. John became the general manager of the Public Works Department in 2007 and the head of Transit Services in 2012. He then took on the role of general manager of Transportation Services in 2016, ahead of the launch of LRT in Ottawa. To summarize John's contribution over his long and distinguished career as a challenge, he has shown himself to be a steadfast leader who has dedicated his career to our community. John's vision, leadership, and expertise have been key in advancing mobility in our city through a sustainable, accessible, and connected transportation network. John has worked with his team to champion initiatives such as the state-of-the-art fare payment systems, to smart intersection technology, and sustainable active transportation infrastructure that will help us meet future growth and the needs of our community. As the GM of Public Works and Transit Services, he managed the implementation of many innovative programs, including the introduction of the double-decker buses to Ottawa's fleet in 2012, the installation of the Rink of Dreams at City Hall 2012, which has attracted literally 50,000 people every single winter, the introduction of Presto Card system in Ottawa 2013, and the Equapass system in 2017, and the creation of a state-of-the-art training facility for bus and LRT drivers in 2017. From 2016 to 2019, John continued leading the Transportation Services Department while also leading the construction and commissioning of the first phase of our LRT system.
As you can see, he was heading many projects at the City of Ottawa that contributed to our community.
...transit system, and as the head of public transit for the past decade, John has times faced controversy and criticism. He has always listened carefully to all sides of an issue to find new ways to improve transit for its customers and employees. John is consistently professional, strategic, and effective, and facing many challenges, and he's been a great asset to the city. He is well-liked by staff and has implemented multiple strategies to foster an inclusive, healthy workplace, respectful of the diversity of people and their skills, and free from harassment and discrimination. He's well-known for his open-door policy with union leaders and employees from every level of the organization. John has worked tirelessly on initiatives that improve services in Ottawa, including many significant improvements in transportation services for disabled and low-income customers. He will be missed, but his many contributions to the development of our transit system will continue to serve our residents for many, many decades in the future. I am pleased to say that work is well underway to expand our rail network farther south, east, and west as part of Stage 2 LRT project, and I give John credit for his leadership in advancing this massive, complicated program. As we all know, the pandemic brought a magnitude of challenges and uncertainty to the public transit industry. Throughout COVID-19, OC Transpo has maintained services to safely meet the mobility needs of Ottawa residents, and our community continued to move despite the pandemic due to the extraordinary efforts of OC Transpo, John's colleagues, and all the staff at OC. OC Transpo was the first transit system in Canada to implement rear door boarding and the first to join APTA's Health and Safety Commitments Program. OC Transpo also led the way in implementing a mandatory mask policy, operator cab shields, and enhanced protocols for vehicles and station cleaning. As we rebound from this pandemic, OC Transpo continues to play a vital role in our city's ability to recover from the pandemic, and again, I want to thank John for his leadership and role in that response. John is a consummate professional and a respected leader in the world of public service and transportation.
He represents our city throughout North America as a guest speaker, and he was invited many times.
Queen Elizabeth II Diamond Jubilee Medal, and next month, at the Canadian Urban Transit Association, they will present him with the Edward J. Dowling Award for Distinguished Service, an award presented annually by the association to a transit professional who has excelled for 10 or more years.
On behalf of my colleague at the council, of the head of the office, and the whole of the city, I would like to thank John for his work, his dedication to the residents of the City of Ottawa.
Dedication to serving other residents, or our residents rather, and our community, and we wish you the very best in the next chapter of your life, and I'll ask Mr. Katalakis to say a few words.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure for me to be here today. On behalf of my colleagues here at the City of Ottawa, I want to begin by thanking John for more than 30 years of dedicated service to the organization and the residents of the City of Ottawa. John's journey began back, as the mayor said, in 1989, when he started working for the City of Napan, but we've never held that against him. As Mayor Watson mentioned, over the years, he has served in several demanding roles, and I was fortunate enough to actually work with John for the last 21 years and being able to appoint him to all his significant roles in the city, starting with a general manager of Public Works, general manager of Transit Services, and now his current role as general manager of Transportation Services. Throughout his career, he's demonstrated that he's a determined leader with a clear sense of vision and unwavering commitment to the well-being of people in the communities that he serves. I mention people here because one of the things that always impressed me about John was his ability to be a servant leader, and that's someone who mentors and coaches employees to help them advance their careers, and he's had a huge impact on every department and on people that he's served with. He's mentored an impressive number of people. He's also maintained a very open-door policy with staff. He's very visible among the staff. He's known to walk through the garages, walk through the yards, walk through the train stations, ride the system, both inside and outside his department. He's always made time for anyone that wanted to speak with him, and I've witnessed this personally many, many times. This is one of the things that makes John such a great leader. He's served a key role in our senior leadership team and will be missed by all his colleagues on the team. We could always count on John to be the voice of reason, providing sage advice to the rest of the team. He was an exceptional colleague around the table, and as someone who has worked at every level of this organization, he was always one of the voices at the table, reminding us about how individual initiatives or solutions might impact the staff at all levels. He always brought a new perspective and consistently thought the city as a whole. He was a valuable member of our senior leadership team and was always willing to work and collaborate to reach the best outcomes for our city. Perhaps most importantly, John offers supportive criticism when it's needed, and unfailingly, when one of his colleagues is going through a difficult time, either personally or with a challenging issue. He is the first to reach out to offer a helping hand or an encouraging word. That's a side of John that I'm sorry the public doesn't always get to see, but it says a lot about who he is and why he'll be missed by his colleagues at the senior leadership team and by me personally. He built strong relationships with the city's unions and was a respectful, solutions-oriented approach. He was successful at team-building with the unions and provided union stability in his time, both in Public Works and at OC Transpo. And I've had the pleasure of working with and calling John a friend for many years now, because we grew up together in this organization since amalgamation. I remember when I appointed him as the general manager of Transit Services, we walked over to the Saint Laurent facility, and it was our first time that we were touring there together since his appointment on the first day. And we walked through the lunchroom, and we met many of the staff, and people were so excited to have John join the team. And one of the staff members said, you know what, and he said it jokingly, and I remember this so clearly, said, you know, if you could do anything for us, put a TV in the lunchroom. We don't have a TV in the lunchroom. And we went back to John's office, and there was this big, huge 60-inch TV in his office. John called the maintenance people, the facilities people, and said, move that TV to the lunchroom, and it was moved by that afternoon for the staff. That says a lot about the kind of leader that he is. I know I'm going to miss having John here for his steadfast guidance and advice, his get-it-done attitude, and his strategic mind. I have no doubt his departure will be felt by our entire organization. Unquestionably, John is a results-driven individual with a focus on service excellence, execution, and a commitment to sustainable and affordable long-term solutions. Mayor Watson and I had the opportunity to tour the O train South Extension last week, and I can say that great progress is being made. I know that light rail has been a massive project to manage, and John has done so with great leadership and confidence. He's been the face of our transit system and the light rail transit projects for numerous years now, and through all the ups and downs, and I recognize this has not been an easy task. In fact, it's one of the things most public servants don't sign up for, to be the public face and become a household name in Ottawa for a project that many people depend on. Yet, John was resilient. He had a complete willingness to be accountable for everything that happened, and these are trademarks of his character, because he was 100% committed to his role and always stood up, even in the face of incredible criticism. I want to take this opportunity to thank John for his exceptional efforts, always willing to put in the hard work. He has played a key role in the transformation of our public transit system and the transformation of our city to the world-class city that we are today, which will serve, which the public transit system will serve our city for generations to come. John's outstanding work has earned him numerous recognitions and awards, but it's also earned him a lot of respect from our council, our staff, our residents, and from myself. In closing, I want to thank and applaud John for his exceptional dedication and commitment to our organization, our staff, and the residents of Ottawa. I'm very happy for John as he transitions to the next chapter of his life, but I also know that he will be greatly missed. John, thank you for your many contributions to our city and our organization. I wish you all the best in retirement, and I hope that you and Joanne and the kids enjoy some of your interests, like traveling, cooking, walking, and cycling in the near future. I know cycling has become a new passion of yours, and I'm sure your six-foot-four frame on a cycle, bicycle, and auto will not be missed by many, but as a longtime cyclist myself, the best thing I can say to you is, may the wind always be on your back. Thank you.
Well said, Steve. Thank you. Before we ask John to say a few words, we'd like to present John a small token of appreciation, a collage of photos that Phil actually took here from the City of Ottawa, so I'll just go and grab this from Heather.
me here today. I'm honored to have served the city for 32 years. I just want to take a few short minutes to thank a few people. First, the two people that brought you, John Mancone, that's my parents, Anna and Allegato Mancone, two hard-working Italian immigrants that taught me the core values of working hard, honesty, dedication, and how proud I should be for working for the municipal government. They're 87 years old and are proud Canadians who call Ottawa a beautiful, caring city, and my father does use OC Transpo on a regular basis. To my children and my wife, Francesco, Claudia, and Joanne, they have tolerated so much during my various roles with the city. Thank you for being understanding, and thank you for your loving support. I also want to thank my siblings, who've had to tolerate many of my city stories through various parties and family gatherings, talking about how great the City of Ottawa is. To my team at the city and the many teams I've been a part of over the city, be it OC Transpo or Public Works, thousands of dedicated employees showing up every day, driving buses, trains, planning routes, conducting master plans, plowing snow, fixing traffic signals, building LRT systems, the list goes on and on. These dedicated employees run this city 24/7, 365, and they too give up a big part of their lives to ensure residents can move around our great city. To the union leaders, working together, we have accomplished what great management and union leaders do when they work together: labor peace and productive working environments. To my management team, thank you for everything. You're professionals that care about your people, the city, and our services. A special thank you to my chief of staff, Jocelyn Beijing, who retired during the peak of COVID, and we couldn't acknowledge her great efforts. Thank you for your 20 years of dedication and support guiding me and the departments I've worked for. To the city's executive team, I'm going to miss you. I wish you the very best of luck in the many challenges that lie ahead. These city senior leaders have massive portfolios that make the city what it is, and I have so much respect for how dedicated you are to the city, your employees, and council. Steve, thank you for all the opportunities and support you have provided me over the years. You and I make a great team. We always knew where we stood. We always knew what outcomes we were striving for. Service excellence, take care of our people, execute council's agenda. To city council members, it has been an honor serving you and your residents. And lastly, Mr. Mayor, a few words to you. Leading a city through massive transformation, such as what we're going through, has its dark moments. It's hard work, and often lonely work, and often challenged by some. Ottawa is a great city, and it is the envy of many who visit us or come to know the city. The initiatives that you have underway will make Ottawa an even better city, a city that is inclusive, caring, safe, green, and positioned for the future. Thank you for your leadership. I want to thank you for all you do for this great city and for the respect you have for the administration and the dedicated employees that you work for every single day. And Chair Hubley, a special word to you. I've worked with many chairs over my career. I want to thank you. It has been an honor and a privilege to work with you. Thank you so much for everything you do.
Well, thank you again, John, and thank you for your kind words, and Steve and councillor Hubley very much appreciate it. Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Councillor Luloff.
Je suis présent.
Councillor Dudas.
Présent.
Councillor Harder.
Here.
Councillor Suts. Councillor Elchantiri.
Présent.
Councillor Gower.
Here.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councillor Shirelli. I see you, councillor. Councillor Egoy.
Here.
Councillor Deans.
I'm here.
Councillor Tierney.
Présent.
Councillor Fleury.
Bonjour.
Councillor King.
Here.
Councillor McKenney.
Here.
Councillor Leeper.
Good morning.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Menard.
Here.
Councillor Cloutier.
Présent.
Councillor Kits.
Here.
Councillor De Ruz.
Here.
Councillor Moffat.
Here.
Councillor Meehan.
Here.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
I see.
You have a quorum, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Confirmation of minutes, adoption of the process verbal pour le huit septembre 21. Carried?
Carried.
Carried.
Declaration of interests, including those originally arising from prior meetings, declaration de conflits d'intérêts. Communications as presented, regrets, councillor Suts regrets that she will not be at today's meeting. Motion to introduce reports, motion important presentation de rapport, conseil Fleury, s'il vous plaît.
Councillor Furu. That Community and Protective Services Committee report 21, the Finance and Economic Development Report 28A, Planning Committee Report 48, and reports from the City Clerk entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act, Explanation Requirements at the City Council Meeting on September 8, 2021, and Status Update. Council inquiries and motions for the period ending September 17, 2021 be received and considered.
The Report, Rapport de Comité, Office of the City Clerk, Status Update, Council inquiries and motions for the period ending September 17, 2021, received?
Reçue.
Committee reports, Rapport de Comité, Committee and Protective Services Committee Report Number 21, Rapport Number 21, de Comité des Services Communitaires et de Protection, Item 2, Towing Service Regulatory Review and Licensing Regime, and we have And we have a, a motion by Counselor El Shantiri. If you'd like to introduce your motion, Counselor El Shantiri.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So moved by myself, seconded by Counselor DeRusse. You just want me to introduce the motion now or talk about the whole item? What's the procedures, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I think you've introduced it and if there's no debate, we can pass it. Otherwise, we'll come back to it. So we'll get the, at least get the amendment on the floor now.
Well, I would like to read it just so we can put it in a context why we did this because this is a result after the committee meeting, we heard so many from the resident, from the delegate, also from my colleague, and I, I, I accept it to work with the staff, Mr. Demonte, and Valerie, our legal service and bylaw services, and to tighten up this report. So therefore, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor DeRusse. Where is the proposed regulation in document one of the report include standards for vehicle storage facility operators? And where the, the proposed regulatory regime also contain compliance and enforcement tool, such as offenses for violation of the bylaw by a license, as well as ability for the chief, for the city chief licensing inspector to inspect premises, vehicle, and documents, to impose condition on a license to suspend a license, and to request the review of license status by the property standard and license appeal committee in the case of breaches of the bylaw. Where it will be beneficial for consumer protection to clarify that vehicle storage facility also be staffed during business hours, be enclosed by a fence, and have signage indicate the operator's name and contact telephone numbers. Be, be it resolved that section eighteen, sub one of the proposed bylaw amendment, contain in document one be amended as indicated by the underlying portion below eighteen, sub one. Every vehicle storage facility operator shall ensure the vehicle storage facility. A, keep as a minimum the following business hour. Monday to Sunday, from eight AM to six PM, the available staff to greet and transact with the visitors and customers, excluding statutory or public holiday. And by appointment only at all other times and on statutory or public holiday. B, as enclosed by the fence and lit at night to enhance security. C, as accessible to police officer for emergency or investigative purpose. D, comply with the city's zoning requirement. E, had a signage visible from the entrance of the facility that indicate the name of the vehicle storage facility operator, indicates the telephone number for visitor and customer to make an appointment or to gain access to the facility and comply with the permanent sign on private property bylaw. Mr. Mayor, I worked with staff on, on this motion and, and also with the chair of the committee. Staff is in support of this motion. As a matter of fact, they prepared it after the, the committee meeting. We, we had a couple of meetings with staff and we believe this motion will address the concern I brought to the committee and also the concern we heard from the, from our residents. So I hope my colleague will support this motion. So is, we are overdue to have a towing bylaw in our city. We've been working on this more than five, six years now on to get where we are today. So I leave that at this point.
Thank you, Counselor. Now I see Counselor Brockington. Is it a quick issue or should we come back to it?
It's probably best to hold it.
Okay, so we'll come back to that. So the, the motion, any other motions on that report? Any other amendments? No? Okay, so we'll come back to that item. Next is Bylaw and Regulatory Services twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty Annual Report, rapport annuel vingt-dix-neuf et vingt. Received and carried?
Received and carried.
Item four, action annual de promission du climat Ottawa, vingt, vingt. Received?
Received.
Fedco Report twenty-eight A, rapport numéro vingt-huit A, committee de finance et développement économique. Corporate Diversity and Inclusion Plan, Plan d'Espèce Solidarité Inclusion. Received?
Received.
Item six, West Carlton Environmental Centre Municipal Host Agreement, entendre avec la municipalité haute de centre environnemental de West Carlton. Carried?
Carried.
Planning Committee Report number forty-eight, rapport numéro canal with the committee de l'urbanisme, zoning bylaw amendment six-one-oh-one Renault Road, and two-nine-eight-oh, three thousand, three thousand forty-eight, three thousand fifty-four, and thirty-eighty Navan Road.
I'd like to register my dissent.
Dissent by Dudas and Kits, I believe.
And dissent as well, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Next, official plan and zoning bylaw amendment twenty-six, thirty-six, and forty, Armstrong Street and nine-sixty-one, nine-sixty-seven, nine-sixty-nine, nine-seventy-three, and nine-seventy-nine Wellington Street West.
Hold for a comment, please.
Okay. Zoning bylaw amendment forty-eight hundred Bank Street, Counselor Gower, you have a, an amendment, seconded by Counselor Meehan. If you'd like to introduce your amendment, please.
Yes, I do. So this amendment is to just clarify the report because it could have been interpreted to allow a planned unit development outside of the area that was intended in the report. So whereas report, whereas the report recommends approval of a zoning bylaw amendment for part of forty-eight hundred Bank Street to permit a planned unit development, and whereas the details of recommended zoning were carried at Planning Committee on September ninth, twenty-twenty-one, and whereas inconsistencies between the report and document two, details of recommended zoning have been identified. Specifically, the document two would rezone a greater area of lands than indicated in document one. Therefore, be it resolved that document one location map be replaced with the map attached here too. Be it further resolved that document two details of recommended zoning be amended by replacing point one with the following text, rezone the land shown in document one, and by adding a new point two as follows, amend section two-thirty-nine urban exceptions by adding a new exception XXXX with provision similar in effect to the following. A, in column two, add the text R four Z XXXX. B, in column five, add the text minimum lot width for a planned unit development, ten meters. Two, minimum interior side yard setback for a townhouse dwelling when located within a PUD and when said side yard abuts a rear yard, one-point-eight meters. And three, despite table fifty-five six, there is no maximum cumulative floor area for accessory buildings. Be it further resolved that pursuant to the Planning Act subsection thirty-four seventeen, no further notice be given.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone wish to speak to either the amendment or the main report? So on the amendment by Counselor Gower, seconded by Counselor Meehan, carried?
Carried.
Carried.
And on the main report, item number nine as amended. Carried?
Carried.
Carried.
Does anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agenda? No? On the bulk consent agenda as presented, carried?
Sorry, Mayor, just item M. I just wanted to register dissent on the one item. It's a brownfield item.
Sorry, let me just get to that. Item N or M?
M. M is in Menard. Thanks.
Okay, so you're, you're dissenting on that. Is that correct, Counselor?
Yeah, that's the brownfield item, I believe.
Okay. On the, the bulk consent agenda as presented, carried?
Carried.
Carried.
We have two items to go back to. The first is towing services regulatory review and licensing, and Counselor Brockington asked that this be held. Counselor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning to you and, and colleagues. I was wondering if, if staff could just put Counselor El Shantiri's motion just on the screen, please? And while we're waiting for that to be put up, I'll just ask staff who helped amend the existing bylaw. I just want to talk about, if you could just scroll down to the, there are four clauses, please. The storage facilities, Counselor El Shantiri is amending the days of the week. And can staff just talk about what was the previous service hours, days of the week, and why do staff feel this needs to be necessary? I, I don't know the background, so I'd like to know that before I ask my next question.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll ask Valerie Bietlo to give you the details of what was previously, but in essence, Counselor, we, we felt supporting this, that it had a better playing field. The, the questions that came up were people that, there are some of the storage facilities that don't have anyone present. And so if you want to recover your vehicle, you could arrive there and there's nobody present. So this creates a, a, a playing field where people can recover their vehicles and the, 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 the rules of the game are, are clear for everyone and it's across the board. And I think that was absent in the initial. It, it didn't come up during the public consultations, but as the Counselor had identified, he had heard that and we, we felt this was a, very much a, a very positive addition to the, to the bylaw. But I'll ask Valerie to give you the details of what was there previously.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Demonte. That is absolutely correct. We expanded the hours from Monday to Sunday. Previously, it was Monday to Friday. The hours remain the same as originally proposed. The nuance that staff be available to, to greet and transact with visitors was something that arose following consultations with members of council. That was always the intent, but this language clarifies that the vehicle storage facilities have to be staffed during those times so that they can both greet visitors and transact with people that are coming to get their vehicles. We realized that we had excluded public holidays and we had intended that, that appointments be available for public holidays and statutory holidays. This language simply clarifies that staff intent. With respect to the enclosure, the words by the fence also clarify the intent that the, that the facilities be enclosed by a fence.
Okay. We approximately know how many storage facilities are in operation in Ottawa?
We estimate there are about twenty.
Okay, so not too many. Okay, I appreciate the clarification. I, I just originally thought it was odd the city would specify the days of the week and the times of day that a, a private business would be opened. But given the small number, and obviously this is trying to address problems that have, that have existed in the past, appreciate the, the modifications to this. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor El Shantiri, please.
Well, I do, I do not have a question for staff, but just to emphasize the need for this, Mr. Mayor. Your car has gone somewhere, you make a phone call, you get the address, you attend where your car's supposed to be and no one there. A lot of those places in the outline area. There's no lighting, no signage, and you called the, the operator, oh, I'll be back. And we had life incidents where more than one time the person has to go try to recover their car and then vehicle. So we heard from the community, I heard from my colleague, attorney, with his residence incidents, I heard from Counselor DeRusse, and, and I have in my own area as well. And I believe strongly with this motion and with the support of my colleague and my staff, that will address those concerns and make it more transparent and more easy for someone to recover their car, you know, from the storage facility. I, 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 for one, as a, as a previous businessman, I can tell you, Counselor Brockton, I don't like anybody telling me what business hour I should have. That if you're going to have my vehicle stored and drag it day after day so I can pay more every day for storage. No, that's something we need to step in and make it fair for the consumer. Our job to protect the consumer here, not those small businesses. But thank you. It's great. I, I, I would talk to some of the industry itself and let me tell you, they, they are in support of the legitimate, not just for this item to be transparent and make it a level playing field among all of them. So I hope we can have everyone's support on this motion. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank staff, Mr. Mayor, because even during the long weekend, Valerie and I, we were working on it and Mr. Demonte, we get so many requests in the last minute, but yet we waited. We had the committee meeting and from the committee meeting, we, we had some, some follow-up and we did have two meetings after that to arrive where we are. And I'm hoping, you know, we can really share our time to our staff for, because this is a long-time report waiting to happen. So thank you.
Thank you. I did see Counselor DeRusse's hand up. Counselor, has your issue been dealt with?
Yes, my issue's been dealt with, but I do want to take a moment to thank Counselor Shantiri and of course, my colleague. But I want to thank Valerie and Mr. Demonte for them realizing and addressing the issue that we've been hearing from our resident. We've heard horrible stories about their car has been hostage for days and days and facilities, they can't get them out. They can't get their belonging and that's, that's a good policy to making sure we have our resident access to after their incident or accident. If they were taken by an ambulance or God forbid, they have to come back, get their belonging. They've been waiting five and six days during holidays, can't get their belonging and they've been charged thousands of dollars. So I just want to thank staff for addressing those issues and my counsel colleague for taking the charge on it. So I also want to thank the Chair, Counselor Lulov for understanding the issue and working with us very diligently. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Counselor, and thank you for seconding the motion. Chair Lulov, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Listen, the care and control of personal property is paramount when trust is placed with these companies. The expansion of ours is important for public confidence and to alleviate the anxiety residents feel when their car has been towed for whatever reason. This is an anxiety that I myself know very well. As the Chair of CPS, I support these specific measures and thanks, and thanks to Counselors El Shantiri and DeRusse for their contribution to strengthening this bylaw. Thank you very much.
Great, and thank you, Counselor. I know it was a, a long meeting. Counselor Harder, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just very briefly, sometimes it takes a long time to get the job done and to, to do the right thing. And certainly it's not because we haven't heard from hundreds of people individually over the years. But I, I, I would be remiss if I didn't put a shout out to our past serving counselor from Stittsville, Chad Cadri, who was very much, and told me, I'm sure, could tell you how he was knocking on his door and, and working with Eli way back when. So I, I doubt that he's watching today, but if he is, it finally got done, Chad. Good job. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. Does anyone else wish to speak to either the amendment or the main report? So on the amendment by Counselors El Shantiri and DeRusse, carried?
Carried.
On the main report as amended.
Carried.
Carried.
Thank you and thanks to staff. I know a lot of work went into this over the years. So very much appreciate all of their efforts as well. The next item that was held is zoning bylaw amendment on Armstrong and Wellington Street West. Counselor Leeper, you asked that this be held.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I, I don't intend to re-prosecute this file at length this morning. We had a, a very good hearing of this at the Planning Committee meeting at which Planning Committee recommended this for approval. And the Hintonburg Community Association and its counsel, Christie Ross, made, I think, one of the, the best policy-focused defenses of the existing secondary plan that I've heard in probably six years of having been on Planning Committee. And I, I don't believe that we're moving in the right direction if we approve this. At the heart of the question is that there is a, a brand-new, relatively brand-new secondary plan for this property that dates back only to twenty-fourteen and that was crafted in the full realization of our intensification policies near transit and in consideration of the arrival of transit at this site. The secondary plan very clearly and deliberately and thoughtfully suggested that this property should be kept to a mid-rise height. The planning staff, and I, I know the feeling of some on committee, was that the proximity to transit was, despite what the secondary plan said, justification for going to a high-rise height. I'm going to ask colleagues to consider this morning that we are in the midst of crafting a controversial new official plan. And that new official plan is going to drive greater intensification right across the city. The language of that new draft official plan is very permissive of intensification in neighborhoods, on main streets, in corridors and hubs. And our promise and our commitment to residents of Ottawa has been that that wide-open language, very permissive language, is going to be constrained within any given geographic context. geographic context. So four stories may be permissible in the general urban area in the official plan, but we're going to constrain that to fewer in neighborhoods where that makes sense. And on traditional main streets, our secondary plans are going to guide how tall buildings can be. Despite the proximity to transit of this development, we have a secondary plan that speaks to what the official plan language around height near transit means for this specific geography. And if we approve this building today, then we are going counter to that very thoughtful secondary plan. That will diminish trust on the part of residents in our commitment to constraining growth in light of the permissive language that is in the official plan. It's going to make it more difficult for us to get their buy-in for the official plan. It's going to create opposition to passing an official plan that has greater intensification as its goal. And I'm simply going to ask those of you who have neighborhoods that are under pressure, intensification pressure, to consider whether approving this building today sends your residents the right message. I'll leave it there, Chair, and I would call for yeas and nays, please.
Okay, does anyone else wish to speak to the item?
I'll just offer a comment. I'm supporting the staff recommendation and planning committee recommendation. If we're serious about transit-oriented development, this site is 400 meters from the Bayview LRT station, which, as you know, is the east-west-north-south juncture. If we're serious about transit-oriented development and making sure that we build up around the transit stations, this is a good example of TOD. So I'd encourage you to support it. And yeas and nays have been called, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Councillor Hubley. Councillor Brockington.
Yes.
Councillor Gower.
Yes.
Councillor Deans.
No.
Councillor Shirelli. Councillor Shirelli, I think you're on mute.
Councillor Shirelli on mute.
Nick.
Can you repeat that one more time, councillor? I'm having audio issues.
He's not saying anything.
No, he keeps freezing. That's the problem.
Councillor Moffat.
Yes.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
No.
Councillor McKenney.
No.
Councillor Tierney.
Yes.
Councillor De Ruz.
Yes.
Councillor Kits.
Yes.
Councillor Seds. Councillor Egwari.
Yes.
Councillor Leeper.
No.
Councillor Lulov.
Yes.
Councillor Millard.
No.
Councillor Harder.
Yes.
Councillor King.
No.
Councillor Mihen.
No.
Councillor Cloutier.
We.
Councillor Fleury.
No.
Councillor Dudus.
Yes.
Councillor Elshantiri.
Yes.
Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Yeah, councillor Shirelli, I think your computer froze. Could you please vote?
My vote is yes.
Thank you.
Fifteen yeas, eight nays.
Okay, thank you. A motion to adopt reports, motion for adoption of reports, councillor Fleury, approval, councillor Kavanaugh, si vous plaît.
Councillor Fleury, seconded by councillor Kavanaugh.
Sir, for the delay, that the community, that the Community Protective Services Committee Report 21, Finance and Economic Development Committee Report 28A, Planning Committee Report 48, and the reports from the city clerk entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public Submission for Items Subject to the Planning Act Explanation Requirements at the City Council Meeting of September 8, 2021, and Status Update Council Inquiries and Motions for the Period Ending September 17, 2021, be received and adopted as amended.
Carried, adopted. A motion requiring suspension of the rules of procedure, motion exige on suspension of the regulation of procedure. First one is by councillor Lulov, seconded by myself. This is provincial funding for COVID-19, and it's time-sensitive, so on suspension of the rules. Carry.
Carry.
Sir Lulov, if you'd like to introduce the motion, please.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I asked that this this motion be circulated earlier today. A memo explaining the content of this motion was also previously distributed. It is a very long motion, full of legal jargon, so I will spare my colleagues reading it in its entirety. This very long motion is to ensure continued delegated authority to assign funds, sign agreements, and continue with pandemic-related operations as it pertains to this provincial funding. It is required due to the aggressive timelines to meet program requirements. Councillors in affected wards will continue to be engaged and consulted as this, as these projects move forward. I would ask that my councillor colleagues support this motion. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions to staff? Councillor Fleury?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to understand, we had a recent report on the $15 million investment, which had some of these items on or parts of these items on. I wonder why this motion wasn't, or that discussion didn't happen at that time, where we're not in possession of that information then?
Donna Gray, I think probably would be most appropriate to respond.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that is correct. We were not in receipt of the details of that, and that program has not yet been approved in terms of the expenditures of that program.
And could we just understand, what is the time sensitivity? We do have a CPS meeting happening on Monday. I mean, from a public point of view, or even for us, the Chair highlighted it, the memo and the motion are quite long for today. So wondering, wondering, what are the, what's the urgency, knowing that we have a committee in three days?
Mr. Mayor, the urgency is to have the business case submitted first to the province to approve our projects and how we plan to allocate and spend that. The risk is that we want to ensure that we have the funding received from the province, and it's dependent on their approval of the business case. And then after that, it's to complete the execution then of all the initiatives that are within that. And as you can see, some of the timelines are March 31, in terms of the operating agreements, in terms of those agreements to get out and have those expenditures approved within the program guidelines. And the capital has timelines for the 2023. And we know that there's significant work in terms of development approvals, et cetera, to move that forward. So this is really based on that approval, giving us the delegated authority to enter into and execute those contribution and funding agreements, and to give us the authority to submit our business case to the province for them to approve it with the priorities listed in the confidential memo.
So I do have a number of questions on the report for clarification. Donna, in the, there's an inquiry response in today's agenda, and I appreciate the discussion we had at committee and the update you provided then. Would it be a friendly amendment to, I know staff often talk about the byword market in the general sense, but from a community point of view, Rita Street and Sandy Hill North is within the same vicinity and struggles with similar challenges around mental health and addiction. So would it be a friendly direction to include Rita Street and Sandy Hill North area in the 24/7 integrated response team that's referred in the report?
Mr. Mayor, absolutely. We can, we can look at that absolutely as part of that. These are kind of big buckets of areas of expenditure, and we have some refinement to do on how we expense that. So there would be no issue with that at all.
Yeah, Mr. Councillor, the deputy clerk suggested that be a direction to staff.
Okay, does it need, verbal is okay, Mr. Mayor? You want me to write it out?
Yeah, I think the clerk can take it down as a direction to staff. If you just maybe send her what you just said about the boundaries of the byword in Rita.
I will, absolutely. Two other questions on the report. I'm sorry, it's extensive, so I'm jumping from one, one item to the other. There are references to the successes of the respite centers, particularly which I'm interested in. And I'm wondering, I guess, two things. One is, we make reference to the wind down, I think the wording was in relation to the end of March 22. But I think we actually need to do a proper analysis of the success of the respite center and how we pivot from there. Because I sort of think we can't look back knowing some of the services. I know our staff are quite engaged on a number of them. And I know councillor Leeper, for example, at Tom Brown, me at Villalgamea, it's important services that we've gone to develop. So could I understand specifically, as it relates to respite center, what's the approach?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And we totally agree, councillor Fleury, around the value of the respite centers. This memo is strictly addressing the funding and the closeout of the funding that has been the primary source of supporting those respite centers through the COVID response. We're currently doing a parallel process, though, looking at how do we transition out with the services in the community, where are gaps, and what are the needs that the respite centers have been filling, not only in COVID, but as we move out of COVID and just into regular operations. And so we're working with the community right now to define those plans, and what would that would look like in terms of the service resumption in those other services that support it, like the day programs, food, et cetera, and be looking at building a plan to fill the gaps if there are in fact gaps. So in summary, this is merely to state the funding is available for those respite centers are in intent, is to have that funding available until March 31 from the provincial government. But then we would need to look at the long-term sustainability of any other service that emanates from the pandemic in the longer term.
That's perfect to hear. And could we get a report to CPS relating kind of an analysis of the respite centers? I think it's been one of the kind of the magic tools that the city's teams used through the pandemic to support, you know, bringing the partners together and then support the community. But it'd be nice to have a report just on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I know we're at, Mr. Mayor, I'm looking for just clarity on the rules. I know we have five minutes at council, but it's quite an extensive memo. I have two more questions that relate to programs.
You still have time on the clock, so you've got two more minutes. So go ahead.
Okay, I'll be quick. So Donna, you're okay with the report? Sir, I didn't hear you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, yes.
Okay, thank you. And so I'll be very brief. We were talking about the $15 million investment and how we were backfilling a federal program on rapid housing initiative, and I appreciated Said's responses. I'm now seeing that we're exposing that now the city's going to fund capital in the 216 Murray project, and we're exposing operational pressures. So I want to understand both. One is, my community, and I've been saying to the community, this is federally funded. Now that's shifted, so a bit of understanding there. And then the other one, have we made the operational request specifically for 216 with the province? And if so, what have they responded to? What have they responded?
Mr. Mayor, I'll ask Said, who's been negotiating and working on that RHI project. I'll have him respond to the councillor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the previous report, councillor, we did indicate the possible use of city funds for 216 Murray and other projects funded under the RHI. In this memo, we do talk about SSRF funds going towards 216 Murray, which will alleviate the city's capital pressures. With respect to the operating funds, because we're bringing on so much supportive housing, we are flagging this to both provincial and federal governments. And we did include as part of the, well, within the motion, we are continuing to engage with the, with the province on an increase to our chippy envelope. That's the Community Homelessness Prevention Initiative, where we get the bulk of our operating funds from. You know, we're looking for increases there. Councillor Egwari had met with the minister earlier this summer. They had indicated that they are looking into this request. We got confirmation that our funding will not be reduced. And there was an asterisk, you know, along that funding line, saying that they are looking at an increase in the funding, you know, due to the additional supportive housing that is going on.
So I'm not clear. Have we submitted a funding? So we have an operational pressure relating to the 216 project. Have we funded, have we asked the province for specifically funding that? Because if not, it becomes a new city pressure for what I think is...
We have asked them to specifically fund it, yes.
Okay. Okay, my last question refers to, I'll read the section. It says, "The City of Ottawa's Community and Family Shelter Branch experienced a net deficit of $2.1 million in 2020. The deficit would have been $17.3 million if the city did not receive COVID funding. Is it possible, as we head into the budget, to get a bit of a breakdown of that motels and shelter costs?" And I know it's more of an operational, like how does the deficit absorb in operations at the city? But I'd love to understand clearly ahead of the budget deliberations, what is the 2020 impact on motels and shelter costs?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that would, we could do that.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Leeper, please.
Oh, sorry, Mayor, it's just been sent to me. The, this is a long motion. I haven't had a chance to read it. It scrolled by very quickly as a notice required motion. Can I just ask that you give councillors a couple of minutes to read this? I've just had a copy finally sent to me.
Yeah, we can, why don't we take a five-minute recess then?
Mr. Mayor, just a quick point of order. I noted that one of the councillors is actually in council chamber. I wonder, is it open for any councillor now to be in council chamber?
Mr. Mayor, this is the deputy clerk. Councillor Hubley had returned to his office to join from his office, but was unable to join the audio for the meeting. So I invited him to return socially distant so that he could participate. But no, we are still recommending that members of council remain virtual.
But if any of us then have any issues with our connection, then we can request coming down into council chamber. I'm just thinking of others who may also have connection issues.
Mr. Mayor, yes, we would be happy to work with any individual member of council. This is in fact the first time that this particular situation has occurred where the issues cannot be resolved, and the member was in fact already in the building.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
So we're on a five-minute recess, and we'll be back momentarily. So we're on a five-minute recess and uh, we'll be back momentarily. Okay, uh, we'll resume the council. Councillor Leeper, um, uh, you have the floor. Where is councillor Leeper? There he is. Councillor Leeper, uh, you have the floor. Okay, I don't see, uh, I see councillor Leeper's uh, photo, but I hope he can hear us. Does anyone else wish to speak to this item of, uh, while we're waiting for councillor Leeper?
He's just entered. There he goes.
Sorry, Chair, I've had a chance to review it and I'm comfortable voting on it now.
Okay, thank you. Councillor McKenney on the motion?
Yes, uh, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just quickly, I just want to make sure that I understand so that the memo that we have is still confidential. Is that correct? Are we just referring to the motion here at uh, at council?
Mr. Mayor, yes, that is correct.
Okay, okay. Um, yeah, I think that again, it's uh, it's a lot to consider. Um, and especially given the, the nature of the confidentiality within the motions. So um, while I do support the direction of the motion, it would be nice to have this uh, in a forum where we could have uh, more um, questions asked about the, the detail. Um, I will just, I will just ask one question in reference to uh, Dun-Donnel Park. Uh, it was also, um, uh, it was also responded to as per uh, an inquiry that uh, that I put forward uh, for being a very high-needs area in terms of the needs to stabilize uh, the issues in and around the park for a very high-needs population of um, residents who mostly live in um, overcrowded um, rooming houses. So I just wonder um, what is established in this motion that will provide staff? And staff have been doing a fantastic job that have been pointed to this. But um, certainly there, there are still um, resources required for them to, to be successful. So I just wonder if staff can just respond to that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, and I do acknowledge and recognize the councillor's concerns about the tight timeline and trying to get a business case to the province. And I, I just wanted to reiterate that this is, you know, kind of tentative, broad um, areas where we want to make the investment and want to be able to get the province to approve those, you know, broad areas. But there will be flexibility through discussions with members of uh, with members of council and with the community around the specifics in those specific areas. And when we're looking at, you know, the unsheltered uh, task force and some of the outreach components that we're looking at in various areas in the city, we're going to look at how the combination of all these fundings uh, opportunities will fill the gaps that we're seeing in specific areas that are problematic like Dun-Donnel Park. So, you know, happy to have a follow-up conversation and we'll definitely be following up with our staff to ensure the gaps are filled if there are in fact gaps.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Thanks, uh, thanks, Mayor.
Anything else councillor? Okay, on uh, the motion by councillor Luloff, carried, adopted. Uh, the next motion requiring suspension of the rules is by councillor King, seconded by councillor Tierney. It's a lease agreement with Jillo Julian Park Fieldhouse, uh, on suspension of the rules. Uh, councillor King, if you'd like to introduce your motion, please. Seconded by councillor Tierney.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. I'm pleased to introduce this motion in an effort to improve the quality of life of youth and not just the Overbrook community, uh, but also in Vanyé and also in Gloucester. The motion before us would authorize city staff to execute a lease agreement with Youth Ottawa and the North Gloucester Giants Football Club to offer more youth-focused programming at the city-owned fieldhouse in Jillo Julian Park to assist youth living in high-priority neighborhoods. The motion allows Youth Ottawa and the Giants the time to apply for a time-sensitive grant opportunity. It is worth noting that the Giants have been the main tenants at the facility for the last forty-plus years and already have an informal lease agreement. The formalized lease agreement will allow Youth Ottawa to team up with the football club to undertake an initiative entitled Rise Up Now, which will be designed to provide a safe and vibrant location for youth in Overbrook, Vanyé and surrounding communities, including Gloucester, to be able to engage in physical activity. The goal will be for Youth Ottawa and the Giants to work together to renovate and retrofit the existing fieldhouse in an exciting effort to make programs accessible to all area youth by allowing every youth to participate at no cost, thus eliminating one of the main barriers to participation in sports and recreation, especially in the interurban core. Youth Ottawa has been operating programs for over twenty years, teaching life skills and operating programs uh, for youth empowerment. Youth Ottawa and the Giants envision an enhanced Jillo Julian Fieldhouse and adjacent field becoming an enhanced hub of activity, activity in the areas of fitness, sport, recreation, and teaching our youth leadership and nutrition. The objective is to help youth become more confident, have greater self-esteem, develop community connections. And our hope is to ultimately reduce crime, improve community wellbeing, and increase the number of kids who go on to attend post-secondary education in an effort to break the bonds of poverty. As a consequence, I'm extremely pleased to be able to introduce this motion, seconded and strongly supported uh, by my colleague councillor Tierney. I would also like to recognize the efforts of Dan uh, Chenier and city staff who worked to develop an agreement amenable to all parties, along with Steve O'Connor at the Giants and Larry Ring at Youth Ottawa, as well as my uh, other council colleague councillor Fleury, who have all been working hard to make this collective vision of barrier-free youth recreation in our communities a reality. I would ask my colleagues to support this motion. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you very much, councillor King. Uh, any comments or questions? No, on the motion as presented by councillor King, presented by councillor. Uh, the next item requiring suspension of the rules procedure is by councillor Brockington, seconded by councillor Luloff with respect to funding a crossing guard. On suspension, carried. Uh, councillor Brockington, if you'd like to introduce a motion, your motion?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, notwithstanding in fact, the difficulty of hiring school crossing guards this school year in Ottawa, I am uh, putting forward a motion today to address a safety issue in my ward. As per the motion, the intersection in question is Anna Avenue at Marivell. This intersection ma, basically serves the W. Galling Public School community. And Marivell Road is a very fast and busy street. It's four lanes and it goes right through the heart of Carlington. We were um, very much appreciated some funding that came into the community from the MTO as part of the Queensway widening that benefited both Kitchessippi and River Ward. And I dedicated that one year's worth of funding at this intersection. And speaking with the principal, this is the intersection that has, causes the most concern in the community. And despite the fact it does not officially meet warrants, it's the speed and volume of traffic that is a concern. So this intersection does get a number of pedestrians. It just is not able to heat and meet those warrants. And as such, um, there is heavy uh, requests and concern in the community for this. So I will commit to council. I, I don't see this as a long-term fix. I don't think it's, it's viable to uh, provide funding for um, crossing guards out of our budget for the long-term, but I do want to fix this in the short-term and work with the community on, on some other alternatives. So I put this before a council today. I do have uh, financial space in my budget to absorb this. And I'm asking for your um, uh, to join me in, in supporting this motion. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Just for clarification, you, you made some reference to the expansion of the four seventeen and funds from MTO. What does that have to do with you taking money out of your office budget?
I just wanted to give some context that the ward qualified for school crossing guard. And in speaking with the community on where to put those resources, this was the intersection that the community identified and said, "This is where we need a crossing guard." So those monies have expired and I'm now trying to continue with this resource with a school crossing guard. And this is how I'm going to pay for it.
Crossing guard was there during the construction and paid for by MTO and now the construction's over.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any comments or question about this motion?
Are there any other motions requiring uh, suspension of the rules or procedure?
Chair, I have one.
Okay, what uh?
It's with respect to uh, uh, providing some more frequent meetings um, on the issue of LRT and the transparency of information. The clerk has it ready to, to go on screen.
So um, I don't have a copy of the motion?
You should be seeing it down on screen, Mayor.
Yeah, maybe you should read it before we suspend the rules.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, so uh, colleagues, I, I am obviously along with the most, uh, most of you and the residents of Ottawa extremely concerned about the state in which the transit system currently finds itself. And uh, I have a motion prepared that says, whereas the two-year-old Ottawa LRT is currently uh, completely immobilized with indication that service interruption will be prolonged. And whereas the tran, entire transit system is under stress due to the requirement to provide replacement service respecting the need for COVID distancing, therefore be it resolved that the Transit Commission will meet bi-weekly until rail service has been fully restored. And be it further resolved that all Transportation Safety Board documents since the August eighth derailment sent to the city be released immediately to council. And be it further resolved that council meet as committee of the whole to address the LRT and bus issues by Friday, September twenty-fourth. That's this Friday, with all city councillors and transit commissioners and with an in-camera legal briefing held as soon as feasible for council.
So you're asking for suspension of the rules. Have you had a chance to consult the Chair of Transit on this motion?
I have not.
Okay, I, I would urge people not to support suspension of the rules. This has just been brought up at the last minute. Uh, there was no advance notice given to the Chair as a courtesy. So uh, yays and nays on suspension of the rules.
Councillor Hubley?
No.
Councillor Brockington?
Yes.
Councillor Gower?
Um, yes.
Councillor Deans?
Absolutely.
Councillor Shirelli?
Yes.
Councillor Moffett?
Nah.
Councillor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Councillor McKenney?
Yes.
Councillor Tierney?
No.
Councillor DeRus?
No.
Councillor Kits?
Yes.
Councillor Suds? Councillor Eglie? Councillor Eglie, sorry, you'll have to repeat that.
All right, yes.
Councillor Leeper?
Yes.
Councillor Luloff?
Yes.
Councillor Menard?
Yes.
Councillor Harder?
Yes.
Councillor King?
Yes.
Councillor Meehan?
Yes.
Councillor Kouchi?
No.
Councillor Fleury?
Oui.
Councillor Dudas?
Oui.
Councillor Dudas? Sorry, can you repeat that?
Oui, yes.
Councillor Elshantiri?
No.
Mayor Watson?
No.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I have sixteen yays and seven nays.
What's required for a suspension?
For suspension of the rules, three-quarters of members and present in voting would be required, uh, which would have been eighteen.
Okay, so that um, uh, motion is lost. Uh, next um, motions for, uh, notice a motion for consideration of subsequent meeting. Uh, councillor Hubley, if you'd like to introduce the motion, seconded by myself.
Could I get the motion put on the screen, please, uh, Adam Clerk?
One moment, please.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor, this is um, in respect to uh, no-charge service for transit customers in December. Whereas the two O train derailments have subjected Ottawa transit customers to significant service disruptions in August and September. And whereas city council recognizes the effect of these major disruptions on our transit customers. And whereas city council wishes to rebuild consumer confidence in the system and encourage the use of transit services in Ottawa. And whereas transit can play an important role in supporting our local economy and job creation by connecting residents with small businesses and restaurants throughout the city, especially during the holiday season. Therefore be it resolved that OC Transport and Para-Transport customers, um, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just got to get that part on my screen. Uh, therefore be it resolved that OC Transport and Para-Transport uh, provide customers with one full month of no-charge transit service in December twenty twenty-one, to be confirmed by the General Manager of Transportation Services following the resumption of service of the old train line one. And be it further resolved, the forgone revenue for no-charge transit service estimated at seven point one million be funded from the anticipated funds from the financial and performance provisions in the project agreement with the Rito Transit Group. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. It'll be debated at the next meeting. Uh, the next um, uh, notice a motion is by councillor McKenney and councillor Meehan, please.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, whereas on December nineteenth, twenty twelve, council voted unanimously in favor of awarding a two-point-three-billion-dollar construction contract to the Rito Transit Group, RTG, to build the city's east-west light rail transit LRT system. And whereas in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, RTG missed at least four deadlines to hand over the LRT system to the city. And whereas the LRT system was finally accepted by city staff and open uh, to residents on September fourteenth, twenty nineteen. And whereas over the last two years, there have been numerous reliability issues and costly setbacks related to the city's LRT system, including problems with the automated doors, systems integration, electrical failures, switch heater failures, wheel issues and brake problems in addition to two derailments. And whereas although city council is exercising its right under the project agreement, much of that work is necessarily confidential to protect the city's interests. There is a legislative instrument in the municipal act two thousand and one that council can use to provide itself and the public with a truly independent review that will determine what has happened with the city's much-needed and very costly light rail system and why, as well as what we as council should do to ensure it doesn't happen again. And whereas section two-seven-four of the municipal act two thousand and one expressly provides a municipal council And whereas Section 274 of the Municipal Act 2001 expressly provides a municipal council with the statutory authority to request by resolution that a judge of the Superior Court of Justice shall, A, investigate any supposed breach of trust or other misconduct of a member of council, an employee of the municipality, or a person having a contract with the municipality in relation to the duties or obligations of that person to the municipality; B, inquire into any matter connected with the good government of the municipality; and/or C, inquire into the conduct of any part of the public business of the municipality. And whereas the mandatory legal procedures to summon witnesses and to give evidence on oath or an affirmation of such a judicial inquiry are set out in Section 33 of the Public Inquiries Act 2009. And whereas the judge may engage legal counsel and other persons to assist in the investigation or inquiry, and whereas the council may hire legal counsel to represent the municipality, and whereas any person whose conduct is called into question in the investigation or inquiry may be represented by legal counsel, and whereas the judge shall report and result, report the results of the investigation or inquiry to the council as soon as practical. And whereas the residents of Ottawa both require and deserve to know the complete and unvarnished truth of how and why their Confederation Line LRT transit system is now the city's largest flawed capital project, therefore be it resolved that city council approve the following: One, that a judicial inquiry be formally requested to be conducted pursuant to Section 274 of the Municipal Act 2001, which authorizes a judge of the Superior Court of Justice to investigate or inquire into any matter regarding a supposed breach of trust or misconduct by a member of council, as an employee, or any person having a contract with the City of Ottawa, or to any matter connected to the good government or the conduct of any part of the city's public business. And two, that the Honorable Jeffrey B. Morowitz, Chief Justice of the Superior Court of Ontario, be requested to designate a judge of the Superior Court of Justice for this statutory inquiry, and the judge so designated as the commissioner to be authorized to conduct the inquiry as follows: One, or A, to obtain, bearing in mind the costs and principles of proportionality, all records and documents necessary to investigate and understand the following: One, the facts and sequences of events from 2012 to the present regarding the approvals, development, costs, timelines, and operation of the city's LRT system; Two, the nature, extent, and application of the delegation of authority provided to city staff in all of these matters; B, having conducted the documentary and reference review to determine what, if any, public hearings should be held into the matters designated for this inquiry; and be it further resolved that the terms of reference of the judicial inquiry shall include to inquire into all aspects of the LRT transit system as it relates to the good government of the municipality or the conduct of its public business, including any impacts, financial or otherwise, on the residents and taxpayers of the city; and be it further resolved that the judge in conducting this inquiry make any recommendations that they consider appropriate and in the public interest as a result of the inquiry; and be it further resolved that the judge in conducting this inquiry is empowered to ask any questions which they consider as necessary to obtain a complete understanding of these matters, including: One, did council maintain sufficient oversight of the LRT transit project; Two, was the delegation of authority provided by council to city staff appropriate; Three, did council receive sufficient, independent, expert advice on the LRT transit project, including the comprehensive procurement processes, and any criteria or factors used; and Four, did those processes or criteria serve the public interest of the residents of the City of Ottawa? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next notice of motion is by Counselor Dean, seconded by Counselor Brockington. Counselor Deans, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just ask the clerk to put the motion on the screen. Okay, thank you. This motion pertains to the LRT maintenance contract, whereas two trains on the Confederation Line have derailed in the last six weeks, whereas the problems with cracked wheels and loose axle bearings on Confederation Line trains have been the subject of investigation by the Transportation Safety Board, and whereas the Confederation Line has experienced a series of problems since the Confederation Line opened with door jams, computer malfunctions, broken overhead wires, and issues with the cantonary system causing service delays. And whereas the Rito Transit Maintenance Group has a 30-year contract with the City of Ottawa to maintain the Confederation Line, and whereas the Rito Transit Group has failed to provide root cause analysis of the problems on the Confederation Line, and whereas members of the public have lost confidence in Rito Transit Maintenance's ability to deliver on their maintenance contract, therefore be it resolved that the city manager explore options to terminate the 30-year maintenance contract with Rito Transit Maintenance and bring back a report to council outlining all implications of an early termination, including a full risk analysis for council's consideration, and therefore be it further resolved that staff review options for the future maintenance of the Confederation Line, including the feasibility of developing an in-house maintenance team and provide a report back to council for information.
Okay, thank you. Any other notices of motion? Motion introduce bylaws, motion important presentation de règlement, conseil Fleury, s'il vous plaît.
Wait, just tell me the document, Mr. Mayor, that the bylaw...
Just looking for the document.
Adopte, carried, confirmation bylaw, Counselor Fleury and Kavanaugh.
That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of September 22, 2021.
None, Mr. Mayor.
Adjournment?
Que les délibérations du conseil du 22 septembre 2021 soit...
That the proceedings of city council meeting of September 22, 2021 be adjourned.